Welcome, everyone, to the San Marcos City Council meeting for April 12th. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please remain standing, we have an invocation this evening from Pastor Mario Campion from The Rock Church.
Welcome, everybody. We bow your heads as we pray. Dear wise and loving God, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and the measure of health and wisdom we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing those responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Bless all in attendance today with eyes to see and ears to hear, to see those we serve and to hear the heart of the community's needs. Thank you for the servant leadership that is in attendance today. Bless our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. Please graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for right, for justice, and confidence in what is good and fitting. Bless the agenda set before them today to be fruitful and for the common good. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of San Marcos. It's in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, you can be seated, please. And can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Scollack?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, now we have some fun things. If the council could join me down below, that would be great. So when I say fun, it's because it's our proclamations and presentations. So we get to recognize people in our community that are doing wonderful things. And tonight, we have some students here. But first, we have Julie Newhart with the, there she is, hello. For the San Marcos City Council is recognizing April 10th as National Siblings Day. You can come on down, Julie. Whereas, Siblings Day is observed annually on April 10th and celebrates the family unit by reminding us that the bond with our siblings is forever and a special gift. Whereas, our brothers and sisters share our earliest experiences and milestones, creating a bond that grows stronger throughout our lives. And whereas, it is important that we cherish our brothers and sisters in the tradition handed down to us by our parents and grandparents. And whereas, Siblings Day follows in the spirit of Mother's Day and Father's Day, a great American tradition that emphasizes the importance of the family unit, which is a paramount and fundamental core value for the city of San Marcos and its residents. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim April 10th, 22, as Siblings Day in the city of San Marcos and encourage all residents to join us in this worthy observance. Thank you. Did you want to, did you want to say something? Yeah, sure, go right ahead. Council, everybody in the city of San Marcos, again, my name is Julie Payne Newhart. This day is, it's such an honor to be here right now and to be recognized. And this day, this National Sibling Day is actually quite special. I'm here with Whitney Pepper. We are part of an organization called the California Sibling Leadership Network. And we are a part of the siblings who will one day become the future caregivers of our brothers and sisters who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. We are part of an organization that is very strong and growing and is such an honor, again, to be, you know, have this proclamation for National Siblings Day to show the importance that the siblings who will become the future caregivers and care managers are important to the city of San Marcos. Whitney, do you want to add anything to that?
I just want to say how important it is to me to be a sibling. Growing up as a sibling just meant for me that I grew up learning to take other people's perspectives. And I think that that's a really important quality that, you know, developed my empathy and my compassion. So for everyone who's a sibling, I'm sure you can understand that. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Congratulations. All right, you guys get to take a picture with the city council, okay? Where are you? Okay, now we have our students from Mission Hills High School. And you guys are the dance team. So I have a few things. I have one for each one of you, but then I have a big one for your recognition. Oh, boy. So, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Mission Hills High School Dance Varsity Team. Whereas, the Mission Hills Varsity Dance Team recently competed in the annual USA High School Dance Nationals competition. And whereas, the Mission Hills Varsity Dance Team was awarded first place in medium hip-hop and first place in varsity palm. And whereas, a dance team was also awarded fourth place in small dance program and fifth place in medium jazz program, along with the Judges Excellence Award. And whereas, the student athletes and coaches of the Mission Hills High School Varsity Dance Team have brought recognition to themselves, their schools, and of course, the city of San Marcos for their hard work and sportsmanship. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, California, do hereby recognize the students and coaches of the Mission Hills Varsity Dance Team and congratulate these students and their achievements today, April 12th, 2022. So, this, if the coaches could come down and actually get this, and then I'm going to start reading off. So I'm going to bring everyone up. Okay, so we're going to start with Ivana Rakovic. All right, congratulations. Sorry, I have to wear my granny glasses, right? Charisma Colian. Kayla Leiken. Kira Besenber. Oh, and if I say anyone's name wrong, it's definitely not my intention. Linnea Born. Cole Ryden. Well, these are a lot of lovely ladies, I'm sure. Dane Neger. It's like having a bunch of sisters, right? Abigail Alvarez. Alexa Hisong. And I don't know if you all noticed, but they are wearing school colors and they're all coordinated, so they spend a lot of time on that, so thanks for that. Nia Sherman. I said that wrong, I know. And I, I knew as soon as I said it, darn it. Chloe Daniels. Madeline Reynolds. Rachel Bitner. Raven Dan Davis. Sabrina Esteban. All right, are you guys nickering because I said something wrong? Sarah Murphy. All right, did I get everyone? Because I, did we miss you? No? Okay, all right. I didn't know if, okay. All right. So, look at this team. Coaches, did you want to say something about this fabulous team? Come on, come on, speech, speech, speech.
I just want to thank you so much for recognizing this team and all their hard work. As you all know, and the past two years has been a challenge and a struggle from keeping our team motivated on Zoom, keep you guys going. But it's all of your hard work and determination that has clearly paid off this season with our school's first championship. So congratulations, guys.
Now, we're going to take pictures. So if you parents want to come up, we're going to try to scooch in and, okay. Your parents will want this later, so let's just indulge them, okay? And yeah, it's with, it's with the city council, so you have to scooch in. Now they're happy, so good. You have to shake everyone's hand now. Okay, now, you've got to go through the, go through the line. You're like, oh my gosh, oh my gosh, chaos. Really, really proud of you. And gentlemen. Okay, see, fun. And see, your parents are happy now, so, you know, it's good. Yes. Best part of our jobs, I have to tell you, for sure. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, do we have any items which any council members wish to pull? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no votes? No. Okay, passes unanimously. Do we have any oral communications? We do. Oh, right here. Jimmy Savile, public comment this evening. Hi, Jimmy. Welcome.
Jimmy Savile. And I want to talk about a very serious in our issue in our community, and that's toddler transphobia. Last year, my wife and I adopted a two-year-old boy from Uganda, from Africa. And we preferred a girl, but only we could get a boy, and we were still very happy about that. We just wanted a black child from Africa. And one day, my wife was painting her nails, and then Timmy wanted to paint his nails, and he was very interested in what she was doing. And it dawned on us, she had been watching a lot of TikTok videos and reading on BuzzFeed, learning about gender identity. And we had realized that gender was just a social construct and had nothing to do with biology whatsoever. And Timmy was assigned male as a boy, as at birth, by the doctor, just by guessing from external anatomy. And that's, that's when it dawned on us. We decided to transition Timmy into Tammy. Like I said, my wife had already always preferred a, a daughter. And that's when the problems started. Some of the parents at the daycare center were uncomfortable with our decision. They said, well, didn't you adopt a boy? And I said, well, didn't you know that gender is just a social construct? Psychologist, world-renowned John Money said that it's just an invented term, that anybody can be anything that he wants to be. And we ran into some other problems when we wanted to get her some surgery. And we were denied by several clinics here in San Diego, but thankfully, we found a clinic in Tijuana who was willing to perform the bottom surgery and amputate Tammy's external parts. But some of our neighbors still now won't let their kids come over to the house. They said that having a drag queen perform for Tammy's third birthday was inappropriate. And some of the fathers were upset that we had the boys dress up in princess dresses and put makeup on. And I said, well, haven't you seen Drag Queen Story Hour? This is what all of the, the cool parents are doing. Desmond Is Amazing is an 11-year-old boy who performs drag. He's been featured on the Good Morning America show and was welcomed by an astounding applause. Michael Strahan was virtually salivating over him. So, we're opening a transgender daycare clinic for other parents here. It's right up the street on San Marcos Boulevard. For other parents who want to change the gender of their children, it's called Hay Kids. It's named after Harry Hay. It's H-A-Y kids. He was the father of the LGBT rights movement and disciple of Al Shur Crowley and probably best known for being the most famous member of Nambla. And, you know, 10 years ago, this would have seemed completely unheard of. We probably would have been arrested and thrown into prison. But thankfully, the Democrats have been paving the path for some time. This is all fully legal now. And the Health and Human Services Secretary just affirmed that child transgender surgery is part of the Obamacare plan. Jen Psaki has agreed to the same thing. So we would expect this kind of transphobia in Florida under Ron DeSantis's leadership. But in California, in such a progressive state, it's quite disappointing. And what we're really thankful for is some of these drag queen cartoons for the kids. When we transitioned Tammy, at first, she said, no, I'm, I'm a boy. And we said, well, but all three-year-olds from Uganda magically transition into, into a girl. And we found these cartoons called Drag Tots, and it's about a bunch of child drag queens. And another one called Shi Zhao, which is about a little boy who finds a magic ring and it turns him into a drag queen when he says, you go, girl. So, we were very thankful for that kinds of material. So, we're going to be opening up the Hay Kids transgender clinic for the children. We're going to be showing those kinds of cartoons just to help other parents who want to transition the gender for, for their children as well. And, you know, we are seeing some backlash, but thankfully, on Facebook, they have a policy against hate speech. And so they systematically remove most of the comments that are critical of the trans toddler agenda. And most of the mainstream conservatives, the brand-name Republicans, they'll, they'll go along with this. I mean, have you noticed how they've all given up on resisting gay marriage and gay adoption? They don't want to be called homophobes. So, they're on board. We want to just thank the Blaze TV and PragerU. They recently endorsed gay surrogacy. And so gay surrogacy, gay adoption, it's, it's all on board with the mainstream Republicans. So, they'll capitulate at some point. They'll start using everyone's pronouns. So, we're just really looking forward to the new Disney transgender characters that are coming out so we can show those at the clinic and help indoctrinate the children for the New World Order. Thank you.
Sorry, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to reports. And the first one is me, and that's Sandeg. So, we actually didn't end up having a, a board meeting. It ended up getting actually canceled because there was no quorum. It was kind of interesting. They said there was no Zoom option, and then there was a Zoom option, so I'm not really sure how that happened. But before that, there was an executive committee meeting, and that was at the, that was actually via Zoom. And there was a, and I actually brought up that we should have a discussion on the, either the executive board me, agenda or on the, the regular Board of Directors' agenda that regarding the ballot measure, well, actually about putting a ballot measure on the ballot regarding the funding of the regional transportation plan. Because in the funding document, it shows that we would start in 2023 to actually start bringing, generating revenue. And so, I, I discussed that, brought that up, and the chair said that we will not be putting that on the agenda because there's no need to, and she has the authority to do that. So, there are several board members that have asked once, twice, numerous times, depending on the board member, to have that agendized. So I'm not quite sure what's going to happen with that, but that will be remaining to be seen. So anyway, we have our next meeting coming up on the fourth Friday of the month. And other than that, that would be all the, oh, I'm sorry, you actually had something for your Sandeg, and that was the Audit Committee? Is that correct?
That's correct. So, we had our Audit Committee on, excuse me, Audit Committee meeting on April 8th. We did discuss a little bit about the use of the credit cards, that the audit was a 10% sampling. And I asked the auditor, Office of Independent Auditor, if that dollar amount that was assigned to that was a reflection of the 100% potential use of the card. And she said, no, it was only for the 10%. One other issue that came up that might affect some of our folks that do commuting. The mayor of Chula Vista has asked on several occasions at Sandeg to end the toll on the SR 125 Expressway, which runs from 52 all the way down to the 905 at the border. She said that it presents a financial hardship for those using the Express, Expressway to transit to, from, and through Chula Vista. During the meeting with the auditor, I brought this up, and what came to light was they conducted a maintenance check because they noticed a drop-off in income from the tolls. And what they found was a contractor that was coming in to work on the system found that some of the cameras were not working, and the cameras are used to track the, the vehicles moving, plus the transponders. It's kind of an integral system. So they cannibalized some of the cameras to get those entryway cameras. So the cameras, as you enter the 125, track your vehicle, and then when you leave, wherever you happen to leave, you get billed for the number of segments you traversed. Unfortunately, the cameras they cannibalized were the ones that were on the egress point. So, there was a roughly a 90-day period where they were not tracking people using the transponders. And their estimate was that they lost approximately $1.8 million in revenue for that three-month period. They're in the process of fixing it now. So I asked the question about that impact with the request from the Chula Vista mayor with, you know, ending the tolls altogether. And I found out, which I knew initially, that the toll road was initially built as a private enterprise, and then Sandeg purchased it. And we still have a bond that's outstanding that we owe $180 million on that will not retire until 2042. So they're likely not going to end the toll road. But they are going to be upgrading the software, I would hope, finding a new vendor, and then establishing some protocols for tracking it. It took 90 days because they weren't as judicious as they should be in checking the system to make sure it was working. And that's how they found out that they were not getting the revenues in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting yesterday. We're back in person. So it was the first meeting in person for our division. And so I was able to attend. It seemed like it was a smaller turnout. I'm not sure if just people are busy or it's because we're back in person. But we did receive some updates. We were informed that the league will be charging us a $600 fee this year. So we're going to be seeing an invoice for, to cover the, the in-person lunches fees. They did also, they're still working on updating their bills, the list of bills that they'll be prioritizing. They did have a draft for us. I didn't see that an electronic version was circulated yet. So once I see that come through, I'll make sure that, that that gets forwarded to the entire council. We have committee meetings that are scheduled for the end of the month. that then would get approved at the next meeting in, in May. And that's also, I think we'll have more of a concrete update on the budget and then the, the bills that continue to move forward.
Okay. Quick question of our city manager. Jack, are we going to have a staff member that will be able to go through those, those bills when we get that, that list?
Yes, we will.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. They did ask for the cities to let them know which bills we are prioritizing. How do we do that?
Okay, well, we can, we have our list, we get from our consultant, Phil's actually going to be handling our legislative piece of the pie, so we can certainly get that list of our priorities to you.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. Good thing I asked that question, then. Perfect. North County Transit District.
We meet next week.
Next week. Okay. North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority. No report? Okay. Clean Energy Alliance Report, Councilmember Musgrove.
I will do my best to be brief. We met March 31st, and at that point, we considered appointments to the Community Advisory Committee for both Escondido and San Marcos. We had good, good applicants. We selected Jennifer Kirschbaum to be on the committee through 2025 and Kevin Norris through 2024. They were all sworn in last week at the April 7th Community Advisory Committee meeting. San Marcos has been identified to host the in-person meeting locations as soon as we get the emergency, state of emergency order lifted, and remote meetings are no longer needed, and it's doing a great part, selecting San Marcos for the accommodation and hospitality the city has extended, and the availability of the particular media to get it onto the internet. I'm going to skip through this as much as I possibly can. We have pending right now, three applicants, City of Oceanside, City of Vista, and San Clemente, and they've all gone through the process we went through last year, where their data from SDG&E has been given to the CEA, it's being evaluated, and in May and June, those respective city councils will vote to join the CEA or to remain with SDG&E as their provider of last resort. If they all three agree, in July, the board will vote to accept those cities. In October, will present a draft implementation plan, and if everything works out, we'll send that to the CPUC in November or December to have them approve it. And what that does for us is with Solana Beach, Carlsbad, and Del Mar, the original cities, approximately 60,000 accounts, so those are, it's not individual people, it's, you know, individual accounts with SDG&E. When we added Escondido and San Marcos, that brought the number up to 152,000, and the Vista-Oceanside and San Clemente agree to join, that will go up to 315,000. That's going to be pretty significant, and it does help us, too. There's already a statewide association of CCAs, so there's already lobbying going on in Sacramento. We had a presentation, I asked to have somebody come in to discuss the current state and potential for nuclear fusion, which is not nuclear fission, we're not talking about atomic bombs or even the, the energy that we use at San Clemente. This is, nuclear fusion is essentially what you get from the sun, hydrogen and helium burn. So we had Sabrina Jo Hall, who's the Director of Strategic Development for General Dynamics. She presented on where we are, where we're going. The understanding's there, but the goal is to bring it to practical scale. The U.S. is a partner with the proof-of-concept facility that's currently being used in France, and General Dynamics is building the central solenoid, which is the controlling factor, at their power, powerway facility, and they're a leader in this option to get us off fossil fuel dependency. Posit is about nuclear fusion. There are no issues with runaways, so if you, if you don't have cooling, there's not a, there's not an issue with the thing going critical. There's no radioactive waste and no chain reaction issues. If it shuts down, it simply shuts down. End of my presentation.
All right. Thank you. City Council Business Visits.
Councilmember Musgrove and I visited the new Scripps facility next to Pima Medical Center over here in North City, and as you can see in the photograph, we did a tour. It's a facility that's, I think it's 14,000 square feet, did I get that right?
15,000.
15,000 square feet, and they have primary care medicine, pediatrics, and what do they call the, the clinic?
The Express Health Clinic.
The Express Health Clinic. So it's a beautiful place, as you can see, it's, it's another addition to our growing sort of healthcare assets here in San Marcos, and, and as they explain, and Councilmember, you can, you can elaborate on their, they're, they're seeing rapid growth in their patient base. They are, have attracted a lot of existing patients, but they see themselves growing very rapidly as well.
That's real interesting. So they, with the limited space they have, and you know, they're co-located with Pima, they have three stories for the 15,000 square feet. I took a picture of the central hallway to show the efficiency. Little things that mean a lot, instead of having doors that open in and out, they have sliding doors. They have four exam rooms on the wellness center, and then 22 on the pediatric family practice center. A full x-ray setup, the gentleman whose photo was either right before or right after that one, that's Adam, he's a x-ray tech. This young man right here, he works for Scripps. He went to Cal State San Marcos, he's a nurse practitioner, and he lives in the area, so he came to this facility as a patient and liked it so well, he put in a transfer, and now he's working here, and he does live in San Marcos. So it's fantastic. We had a great group to give us the tour. Tracy Chu, who's the Corporate Vice President of Population Health and the Chief Executive of Accountable Care Organization. Amber Trevru, I hope I get that right. Very nice, very known to a lot of folks in San Marcos. She's the Senior Director of Government Relations. Audret Kennan is the Manager of Clinical Operations, along with Vanessa, who is also a manager of clinical operations. So that's the group right there. So they split out off, when you, when you come into the main entrance, there's a right wing for the wellness center, and then the left wing is for the family practitioner, pediatrics. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Councilmember, they, they said they want to expand out into OB-GYN care, so they are looking for more space. There's only so much they have in that building, and they're looking to expand their operations. They're, they're receiving patients from as far away as the South Bay, Riverside County, Oceanside, because of the services they provide here, and I think, you know, we, we asked the question, you know, there's a lot of brand loyalty, if you belong to Scripps, and you find a doctor or a practitioner that you really like, if they move, you want to go with them, and that's what they're seeing. So they're, they're not turning people away, but they're certainly running out of space very quickly, so they definitely want to expand and stay in San Marcos.
I wonder if they'll talk to North City and figure out how to get them to build some space for them.
That, there's a piece of property that they mentioned, but we didn't go in any detail because that's a business transaction for them.
Nice. Okay. Well, we are becoming the healthcare hub of North County also. Moving on, next is San Marcos Creek Project. Jack Griffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Big news, the Bent Avenue Bridge will open in May. We don't have a date certain in May, but it will be in May, so we, we used to say spring, so now we've narrowed it down to a month in the spring. So that's all good news. Also, SDG&E will be out on Bent Avenue itself over the next few weeks doing installations of some utilities, which will result in some of the poles coming down along Bent, which will certainly improve the appearance of that, our area. If you've noticed, the bridge itself, you start to see the railings on the sides, it starts to look like something nice as opposed to just sort of that flat concrete thing that we've seen for the last few months. So all the architectural things are going on right now, the streetlights being installed, what have you. We finished our exploratory drilling for the Verver Cruz Bridge. Found a lot of rock, but we think that's actually going to be some good news, and then some of our peers will be a little shorter, so we should realize a little cost savings there, which we need. And then lastly, we're still working on the water high line, which is important for the property on the south side of Discovery. Some utility conflicts there, but that should be finished fairly soon. We can make the switch over on Discovery, so. And we, we essentially recently passed the halfway point in terms of costs on the SEMA contract. The contract's $61 million, and we've just passed the $32 million invoice point, so, so we'll be spending that last half of it over the last year, so that's it.
How much are we over if we know? Do we know? I know it started out at 100, I think it was a...
Yeah, the total project cost is $108 million, and we have 63 to date, so we're within the budget still on the overall contract.
Great.
Overall project, rather.
That's great. Okay. Council Commentary. Any items? I'm just a little excited that we're called the It City now. San Marcos from drive-through to drive-to. How San Marcos became the It City recently in the Times of San Diego. If you haven't seen it, it's pretty exciting to see us seen for what we have become, which is a place where not everyone, I mean, a lot of people like to drive through, but drive here and stay a little bit, too, which is great, because we want people to spend their money if they're going to be on our roads. Anything else? Yes, Councilmember.
If you have free time this Sunday, the Easter egg roll.
Ooh.
Yes, up at the park or Twin Oaks, you have to be there by the Williams Barn. I'm sure they're going to use most of the available grass space, anticipated to be in the hundreds, if not thousands. Watch your step.
Lots of eggs. Lots of eggs. All right. And Owen, you can find everything on our website, sand-markos.net, under Parks and Rec. Anything else? All right, well, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.